Yes.
We're ready.
If anybody please silence any cellular devices like. Call the meeting to order. Stand to electrically. Here, here.
Here, here.
Black.
Here.
Yoder.
Here.
Rush, absent prior notice. Miller.
Here.
Nixon.
Here.
Creaky. Bailey.
Here.
And Heiser.
Here. Next, I don't know, it's considerate to the agenda. Anybody have any additions or additions?
I approve the agenda and present it for tonight's meeting. Second.
Miller. On paper.
Hi. Sorry.
Sorry.
We're we're gonna remove. Number two.
Oh, sorry. On the agenda, we're going to. Add membership. Business category. And some possible applications.
Yeah, I had three applications that were sent over. But I don't think Adam, nobody fit the business category. I don't have anybody for us to, for you to even.
Okay, I don't know if they're sort of out of order here, but I could take, I could move out of the business category because I. Could go somewhere else or move from the category to men, whatever's helpful.
Then, since we've already approved the agenda as it is, let's discuss it then.
Back up, alright.
Even if it isn't.
Yeah.
Alright. Let's go with the same motion. To all. Any comments of interest? None. Public comment, I don't see, nobody on mine. See up comments?
Um, things. We are working on the annual report. So, any training orders from last year? Let us know. And we are also working on the CID. We've got twenty-five middle this year. Also. Yeah, so. Hopefully we have the bring those next month for you to review.
To the reason of March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Hopefully we have that can reveal.
Sorry. I approve the minutes. Waiting has presented. With the. The comment. Always trust of how thorough these minutes are. Thank you for what you do.
Support.
More for my next support part of that. Scott. Um, all. New business. New business. We have. DCC zero three, twenty twenty-five oh seven, cast and township rezoning. Uh, medium, small lot, mixed. Use commercial.
This is request from Cast and Township received, uh, March twenty-second. Request action is review and comment on rezoning request in Cast and Township. For approximately two acres. For medium and small lot. To mixed use commercial for. The applicant, new cast LLC. Who is Bob Sutherland. Existing land use is residential, single-family homes. The adjacent land use and zoning. Property to the north. The land is just single-family homes. And the zoning is village high-density district, medium and small lot, residential. Density. Property to the south, the land used against single-family homes. And the same zoning. Property to the east is a base. And that is the village high-density, large lots and family and peripheral uses. And then property to the west, single-family. Village high-density, mixed-use commercial core. Page five. Significant elements of the master plan. Yes, the master plan. Based on following in chapter six. The designations on the future land use map are general in nature and therefore not intended to correspond on property lines. The planning commission and the township board shall rezonate particular properties as they see fit to implement the plan in an orderly and good fashion. Uh, in chapter four of the general plan. Day. Most development will be residential, but local regulations need to be changed to improve opportunities for jobs and affordable housing. Especially in existing villages. New development should occur when and only in locations which have. Guaranteed adequate public services to support the public service needs of new development. The density of new development will respect the character of the surrounding area. The capacities of necessary public services and not needlessly laundered land resources. New development will occur in response to market demand and not negatively. Or ahead of necessary public facilities. Public hearing was held on June seventeenth. At which time several public comments were made opposing the rezoning. In addition, several of the surrounding neighbors submitted their disapproval of the zoning request in writing. After a lengthy discussion, the planning commission. Made an decision to deny the request. At that time, the applicant requested to withdraw the application without a vote. No vote was taken. Planning commission accepted the withdrawal of the application. A second public hearing was then held on November eighteenth. At which time several public comments were made opposing the rezoning with one member of the public in support. At that time, the planning commission. Passed an motion to approve the rezoning application and forwarded on to the county for review. Moving on, page six. A little bit of history. According to the applicant and the township minutes, in May, twenty twenty-four. A request was presented by Mark McKeller of Coon Rogers, behalf of Bob Sutherland. To the township to rezonate approximately one point nine seven acres for medium and small lot. Residential density. To the mixed-use commercial core. The application did not include any voluntary offer of conditions. According to the request, Bob Sutherland, owner of Cherry Republic. Rezoning of subject parcel would allow for the development of housing for their employees. That is desperately needed due to the expansion of the business. In November twenty twenty-four, the request was resubmitted with a voluntary offer of conditions. After being withdrawn at the first public hearing. The applicant reduced the request to a maximum number of eight new dwelling units. In addition, the existing residential dwelling currently located on the parcel. And will not seek variance for the three quarters of an acre. Moving on to staff analysis and findings. Would the, would rezoning be consistent with development in the area? The parcel to the west is on the mixed-use commercial core. And has a residential structure located on it. Further to the west across South Maple City Road. There is a partial parcel, zone mixed commercial use for, which has a six-unit apartment complex located on it. Are uses in the existing zone reasonable? Yes. Do current regulations leave the applicant without economically beneficial or productive options? No. The applicant can use the property as currently zoned. Moving down to staff comments. As the township receiving application from the owner, Bob Sutherland to rezonate his property located east of South Maple Street. There were no additional included with the application at that time. After withdrawing their application at the first public hearing, it was resubmitted with voluntary offer of conditions. And then I, we have included just a little bit about the, um. Conditional rezoning for the Michigan zoning and neighboring act. In Michigan, it is legal to have conditional rezoning. The conditions have to be proposed by the applicants, not the local government. Moving on, page seven. It is the courtman reviewing the zoning request to look at the current uses, the uses allowed by proposed zoning district, the master plan. And the surrounding uses and zoning districts. And then they're showing you some of the uses. That are under the current zoning, single-family dwelling duplex. All locations. Under the current zoning, the allowed residential density is two single-family dwelling units per acre. Under the requested mixed-use commercial for zoning. Townhouse dwellings and apartment dwellings are allowed. And the number of dwelling units for a two-acre property would be eight single-family dwelling units. Or thirty-two multi-family dwelling units. And then finally, I just made a staff note that. The condition request from the applicant limited the number of dwelling units to eight. In addition, existing home. But the motion passed at the township. Day nine.
Obviously, there's a lot of issues going on. For housing. Area. It did read, remember the. Comments by the individuals that were against this. The comment, the accommodations were made. This is more just a. I'm not sure the planning commission, the accommodations made by the business owner. I, I would. We're gonna be hard to enforce in reality. So I hope that the planning commission and people in county would look at what's been approved. It's moving towards, and they're happy with that. If they're happy with that, maybe it could be thirty-two minutes or eight. And it seems that area is that way, but the noise from management, always the max occupants per unit. It, it, I don't think, I don't think they can manage to. The combinations, I don't think that's realistic. So I hope the. Planning commission and township realize it's gonna grow and it's gonna have more people per unit. And it's gonna always be, they're, they're okay with that. I think that fits what's the zone. But I think the combinations are. In real.
Um, yeah, I didn't read through everything. I found it very difficult to read through the minutes, um. Very complicated to kind of get the gist of what the public was even saying there without. Trying to piece together without reading that. So I found that very, um, it'd be great if, yeah, minutes were set in the future that we could read that through clarity. It was kind of hard to get the sentiment of the public there without, you know, you kind of got the gist of it, but it was difficult. Uh, but I did. Looking through everything, I felt like, and I'm familiar with the area there. I mean, I felt like it. It was appropriate, uh, for what they were putting in there. I did with some of the conditions there. I thought it was kind of. I was amazed there wasn't more conditions that the property owner brought on, I guess. Usually I see that with more conditional rezoning that they bring in more, but. Um, I was very limited in that, so, um. As far as what they're requesting there, I don't, I didn't see a huge issue with, I guess, myself. Oh, right, right, cool.
Mr. Miller.
I looked at it and have. Question, I, I don't know how, why this parcel is, and I can't find it anywhere. Probably couldn't scale it, but. But my concern is. It looks like if you're building units, you're building driveways, you're building. Park. It would be hard for it to be recorded setback. In the side. That said. I think any approval. Should somehow. Indigent add a condition, I mean, the planning commission can't add that commission, that, that. Decision. But there won't be any variances granted. Or any hardship. Of setbacks. And then. I don't think this area has water. So then you have to feel in there as well. Yes, my concern is what. That, that. I, I'm saying you should find making. Limit. Very easy for hardy. Three hardships. That develop the landowner is creating his own hardships, but both of them, this is hard for for this thing.
I thought the material that was provided by them to be pretty. Impressive in, in number, but I would share the opinions of a couple of my other commissioners that. Well, I follow because I think the, the five-year planning commission. Got, got lost a little bit in what's a site plan versus what's. A rezoning. And much of the conversation, I think they share relates them. That, that would lay more to a discussion about the actual site plan. Than rezoning, given that. I was on the site this weekend, uh, intentionally. Uh, running around township. And decided we'd go over the case on it. Township. And went up and down Main Street. And. Right, right, I think there's, uh. Uh, I can appreciate people's feeling that they don't like to see change, particularly by your neighborhood. And this is a real world neighbor, they're on our sidewalks. There's multiple kinds of housing there. If you look on page. The map, page. Uh. I think it's better than page fifty-two, at the time, at the back. Um. You can see West End Street down near the south, which runs right into Verdictville Road. And this map is old enough, but it doesn't include right at the corner of South Maple City Road. And. Here was called Verdictville Road. That corner is occupied by two brand, looks like pretty brand-new. Uh. So there's, and then as you go on up, as they've mentioned in their, in their documents too, you go up across Maple City, across the park, property on lot. Zero seven, zero zero three, zero zero five dash ten. Is a apartment complex of some size there. And directly across from the property, it's hard to see on the map. But there is a residential house with, that's what a residence is, there's a. But there's also a large barn there, uh, that the homeowners are either using for storage or a workshop or something. And then on the actual property, they've alluded to it. There are two mobile homes. They are in pretty tough. Shady. Uh, so I, looking at that, it's not our job to decide whether they're making the right decision. But I submit that I think there's ample space for, uh. I, I. Two units. Has he supposed to have that? Eight, eight, or four years? Two. Uh. With a drive-in there, there's a recreation facility there. Uh. For those that are here. The, uh. Area itself, uh. Probably be approved with this development. Um. I sympathize with neighbors who are concerned about noise. And in fact, on the neighborhood, we've got an increased number of people. But, but that's the reality of life right now, is development. And things change. The question maybe is, is this the right thing in the right location? And have they done their due diligence? And they certainly have. And they go through those bits of real life. They, they were voting against it, at least the chairperson was voting against it. And the representative, Mr. Sosadum, all calling timeout. And came back, what I thought was a pretty ambitious proposal. Uh, and they still, they'll vote totally in favor of it. I think it was a three to two vote. Uh, which means they are representing some of the citizens who are very concerned about expansion. And obviously for their board, for their board, I might say, I did the question, their diligence, they were thorough. And what they looked at, I think they got caught up in the weeds of site plan, but, um. I too support, they're there and encourage them to pursue this.
Mr. Smith.
Well, I found it interesting that there was time to find it again, why. You can put it really, stating with the, yeah, the planning commission has the latitude to rezonate. Um, to, to the density as the need arose, because it's like, I don't know, like the same. Doc, doc, but, so, you know, it, it gives the expansion of available property for higher densities was needed. They, they can do it, um, that, that seems good. Um, there was concern about controlling the, uh. If it's gonna work, how, how do you control that in the future? Does, does it change something else? You know, it's, it's, request that, uh, the, yeah. By this restriction of the property somehow, so there's definitely changes in. Um, short-term, which is just maybe bigger here. Um. So, um, and then. Building for four units, I don't know if there's a restriction on size. Or minimum size for you or not. Um. Because four units doesn't necessarily mean. Thousands per feet. You know. That's a lot. Yeah, yeah.
Which is just pretty. Large.
For, well, for, um, eight units.
No, probably, I think the rest of this interview.
Yeah, that seems also.
I think I slate the plan. Deal, deal.
Yeah, right, right. So, I mean, I'm prepared for trying to find a list for housing, and I have, I have a mandate. But in the industry, you need to have housing. So. Say we should. They're gonna have the same strengths as we're talking about, the duplexes have, have. Because they had such a, run around the farm. Um. A people of a drink, stuff that you'll plus there, stuff that you'll, it's just used up, rock, rock, they're so, so nasty. Yeah. You know, land required. It's more precisely because you can't, you can't go to two stories because. You have, you have, you have some programs, um, and if I have, you know, part, part, and then another one of. The other one, I haven't had a special program, because you have, you have no specific water, you can't do that. Lots of constraints there. That's stuff, thank you.
Well, I, I have a little personal thing, I mean, that does. I know an individual right in the middle of this. One of the favorites that man mentioned, uh. They made a drive, a drive, a house. And what I'm seeing in this, right, right in this area, having a good night, I can't see some of those. I guess, yes, they call them rolling, I call them two I racks. They have already, um, got quite a mix there. And I personally don't think that. The red rental, red harvest. I don't recall, well, red, red, I'm just forgetting, but, uh. I don't think it's. The area, they've already. Quite much in some of their setbacks already, and they have many, you know. Square foot requirements of all those. Um, because they're moving in with driving, making in all those. Um, I have no, no driving, question, maybe minimum square feet. Um, I don't think they can do any harm to the area. It's bad, actually, if it's. If it's done well, then they. It's gonna be a noise, it's gonna help. Bring, bring children in, it's gonna make no noise. I'm, I can't see a reason why. They shouldn't be on going in.
Um, yeah, I was, was a little irritated with how poorly they scanned in this. Some of it, I mean, it was like downright, uh, hospital.
Yeah.
Uh, and took, took twice off. It's gonna be like. That's, that one. Uh, but beyond that, I, I will, um. No, no, give my, uh. Regards to these guys and people on the board that, uh, you know, maybe did. Go through kind of a vigorous process and. Um, in some respects, and I'm not sure if this is, because I know that the government. The board can't say, hey, want, want to have these issues. But I would assume you have some conversation about what, what you might. Like, like, in terms of conditions. And so I was just curious, like. Is that a conversation that is allowed to happen, or is it, you know, like, like. You just can't dictate on that, what, what condition should be.
And have those discussions in the site plan. When you get in, you really have hours, and you got those terms about, about going ring, road, road, and. And appearance and lighting and all.
This is really the corner area.
Yeah, this is really a discussion, should they rezonate.
In order to allow for this, yeah, yeah, which. You know, it means there's a couple ways they could have done it. To, it. They could have granted the point zero three acres and. Then, then he could have built condos there. Well, no, no, that would have been pretty, that would have switched, so. Uh, that part I understand now a little better, uh, because they're, they're, I was like, why, why wouldn't he just get the. You know, make it bigger, and then you build thirty condos there, but they have to do a switch too. So, now I get, um, why they had that piece, uh, and then, other than that, I mean. You know, it just gives me pause for a future, like, again, like, so, so this is a conditional zoning switch, but, yeah, is there any real enforcement in terms of. Preventing this from becoming something other than what it was initially meant, meant to be, which was supposed to be, uh, housing for, for his employees. And I'm, I'm, I'm not necessarily suggesting that the township would have. Authority over that, but there should be some conversation, I think, about. What that future looks like, and, or. What kind of guarantees does the township have that it could be later on down the road? I mean, simply like, you know, you'll decide, hey, I actually want to sell these homes. I, I mean, do they, they have a, an avenue for, for that? And, and other than that, I think it's great, you need housing. I'm ready to recruit those people.
Yeah, yeah, I did, I did agree, I did, I did agree, um, but, but. The one thing that it didn't come to my mind is that it is. Jury public is, has a lot of. Seasonal workers. And that's, that's, if their. Units are only going to be used as seasonal units. Or possibly if they're, if they're. What, what, what they can be used for the rest of that time, or if they use for some, for the rest of that time, so. I think it needs to be something like that, and you probably. Um, and. Some sort of directive to, to determine what the outside might be other than. For his employees. Talking about that.
Hey, I had just one more point. This is, uh, appreciated seeing the documents, the staff, the language from the general plan. These are big observations, but they're so pertinent. That I was. That I was certainly encouraged, folks, from, they face township to re-read that again, because that's certainly a state that. Encourages, uh, looking at your zoning ordinance and thinking about modifying it to accommodate. New housing approaches and this notion, uh, presented by Mr. Sosadum. Clearly, it sits that, so I, I just want to add that with emphasis that. That language is really valuable, I think, to encourage boards and townships to, uh. To, to change those zoning ordinance to satisfy, not develop. With that, I approve that we, uh. Uh, let's, I support, take place on this decision and send all our comments. And relay the material to take place on township.
Second.
Second by. What's my, I think, second by three key? It's a broken. On the paper. They got on the agenda for two, uh, membership business category. I don't know.
I think I'm in the business category, right? Might, might run the car, I'm right. I can't remember.
I'm down with business category.
So, the problem was when I found that form, it could be as a full form line, only let check one box, which I found disturbing. So I put it out, checked the multiple boxes. So I'm not sure what I got aside. But I'd be willing to change, but that may make a way to facilitate. The advocates you have, that's, it makes it convenient.
As I will talk to the end of the office.
Yeah, if you have that possible.
My turn, right? I'm in education, and I don't know what my needs.
Yeah.
I, I would be much better in the business world, in the education. If you need to go for it.
No, actually, I think.
I was curious, sorry. I can't even erase that, but would it, would it be in our agenda to back that from anywhere, or? Like, would you get it?
I got back in the office.
Okay, okay, I was just like, I'm like.
How big for any planning session?
It looks like. We had a really hard decision and. I think we, as, as any developer, our own approach. In terms of, it's pretty good outline, but by, by Michigan State, to follow. And and what did we need to go through and then. We visit, think things to what need to change, and try to bring things up to. That are referenced by statistics, update statistics.
And what, what are we?
Talking about the annual.
We don't, we don't, we don't have a session to do.
Brian, I don't know if you're in now, topic for any planning session?
Yeah, my suggestion, that that could be the general.
I, I don't know. Concerned, uh, like, like to see uniformity in, in, uh, various, various conferences for. A lot of line adjustments for, uh, say, over. Our, our, something like that, all those types of things. A little, little uniformity through all economy. Um, I, I, and then the situation where I sold, these cars, sold, and delivered. And then, and then all the kinds of, I asked this question. Uh, what's this cost? I was told, what's five, five dollars? Okay, I, I, I started calling around, I found that the cash township K Ds, whatever, right next door, twenty nine hours. And there, there, uh, up in Cleveland, uh, it's free, a lot, a lot of justice. And then, then I, so I first question, I went to Steve, who was on the board there, so. And I went to sort of, board meeting, and I asked a question. Have you got any form of your fees? They were all on the union, just separate for each shot, I was like. So, so I think back, I can hundred and fifty dollars, I tried to argue, eight days. Uh, but, but it'd be nice to know that there's a meaningful role to all of the whole economy. And I'm talking, uh, there's also costs. Different, different, different things, permitting fees, have some meaningful forms of all of our economy. I don't know if that's a topic that makes sense. Uh, maybe I get, we have, we have my field, that's the first thing I'd like to say.
Excuse me, the educational topic, I can break the speaker right, I can't hear you.
Well, I didn't do it, but when.
So, I just want to make that mention, because I'm fairly certain, uh, that any lead town just is a lot of, a lot of. It's okay, I, I, I should answer this, so. They waived the fee for me, because there was some, now my mistake, that was what you mean. And, um, just to kind of give you guys some comments, what I went through, which was. I bought a piece of land and built my house on it, so it's a mortgage, all that stuff. And, uh, come to find out, in twenty fourteen, there was a bad survey done on, on my property, so. All the lines shifted forty feet, and I wound up owning. The county didn't yet open up boxes, I, I owned it, and I had a lawyer, a lot of money, fixed it, it was a pain in the butt. And, uh, but I learned a lot, and I realized that, really, really pay attention to that stuff. And don't trust that other people's job is to do this stuff, it's actually getting done correctly. Uh, and so it was a big, big hassle, um, and what happened was, I ended up with twenty two acres of my in-laws. And when I went to the G I S office, uh, Mr. Nerman, my camera, first, first young guy that, uh, that, you know, you know. Geo analyst, does that kind of stuff? And I was able to see exactly where the stake was, so this went roots, this wasn't like. Now, had there been a property sale or transfer ownership, it likely would have bought it. I, I'm assuming someone would have bought it eventually. But like, like, in proper paperwork was filed with the county, you know, township. Before I ever purchased the land, you know, because I purchased it until twenty twenty one, started to build. But, but just, just throwing that out there, because it's, I'm almost P T S D from how. This is, it was a block out of it, but he brought that up, and I thought, you know, it might be worth. Having some kind of discussion, maybe not appropriate for the, for the anti, uh, train station, but. I was all the way at, at, that's just how. Things were just not efficient, in my, in my, and so, those are.
So, was this, you have mentioned the technology survey equipment, or was it another?
I, I, I completely think it was an error, because another gentleman came, uh, and then. Did, he did survey and found error, but, but he was dumb.
Every, every way, survey equipment gets better, it changes our product.
No, I think, this, this was amazing, this, this, yeah, yeah.
Let's get back at the, what we're doing, we're doing, you know, topic for. Um, our, our planning session coming up here in, uh, October.
Yeah, yeah.
So, what, what you have listed here. All of these are passing planning sessions, you have done?
Or discussed, yeah.
Or, or discuss?
Yeah, just, I mean, I would go, give us your ideas, or something.
So, I liked Brian's suggestion at the last meeting, where you suggested. You know, continuing on the discussion about solar installations, or some energy related, um. Up, update, that kind of innovation, that was a good idea.
And, and, and last session, they had actually finalized the law for Michigan to be able, um. Uh, zero and renewable by twenty thirty five, uh, so there's, there's definitely been changes, and it's just. Finishing of that legislation has had some sense, but, and I still agree, I think, very great about the topic.
Great, great, if I could suggest, um, I talked to our planner. Uh, let's step back, and we're trying to look at what are our issues that are on the horizon, everybody sees about, in housing, maybe we got to do it tonight, and. Taxes, incremental financial ordinances are quite unusual out there. And maybe somebody from M S U or some attorney could, could propose. Uh, some law language for taxing and financing, we get very opinions from very sources. From, uh, we've, we've, we've looked at home stretch and, uh, housing north. And, and potential housing, they're very, all have a little different wisdom, but that is. So, they're going to, maybe they need to have somebody that's expert, very, very qualified. An expert, yeah. Yeah, um. But somebody maybe from the M S U, or somebody that come in and talk about. What it takes to finance, uh. Yeah, for, for housing. Just something along that line. That is a version, it's a, it's an issue out there. I just, that is one, one notion.
When he's talking tips, that's a tool in, um. Building capital, um, stack on, on, on financing housing. Pilot program is also, um, so two different tools, um. Yeah, yeah.
So, we're talking about tools for.
The tip, tip is very different than for housing.
Tip is just a tool.
And pilot.
For our D A A, and that's used for, uh, maybe by financing, helping by financing capital projects for water sidewalks, like.
Well, it's inside some district.
And again, in the D A A district.
Yeah.
If there is a D A A district.
I don't know. You can do it, incorporate those, or something, if anybody's doing it, unimportant.
Okay, I agree.
Yeah, I don't either.
The, 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 that's right, the only one is really something big.
Well, there are three and four.
I can find out.
I don't think any of the other thing. So, somebody hands down someone.
Because we're kind of trying to find some, some ideas, I guess, so that the gap can. Trying forward with something to possibly find somebody, or, or schedule somebody, so.
The last presentation was, they, they got, uh, electrical. The facility, smaller facilities, and drew probably the smallest group we've ever seen, but I mean, there were four of us there. As commissioners, it was very difficult, so somehow, and yet it was well advertised, I mean, it was out there. It just didn't catch anybody's interest, I guess. And yet, you know, very, very interesting presentation.
I think, I think, only interesting, you understood the legislation. But it wasn't practical, because it probably never going to happen, because land costs are too high. Where, where, so there's no, no major transmission lines going through back and forth in different directions.
But I don't think that was known before the session. I think the session itself didn't attract.
It was just a topic, you mean?
Maybe it was, you know, not encouragingly, or, or something, or written up, or whatever. But, but, um, you know, I'd like us to have a topic that a lot of people have an interest in.
So, for, for housing.
I don't know, well, we've gone to.
Kind of like a tip idea, there's, there's, there's been a part of that now, that gets for housing.
Yes, yes, sir. I would, maybe there is for somebody.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think we're in a very, the U G, you know, afterwards, if you have judgment, I can bring back.
So, it'll probably be, maybe the function of the land bank, and our ground, to cut out. Those two different organizations can be helpful in different ways. And you can see in the advisor article, was last week, most industries, yeah, industries, we should. The reporter was confused as well.
It might, might be a lot, like, you know, talking, might. You know, what, what are the alternatives for local township, our model, to assist developers in? In, in developing for, for the house, you know, something like that, I'd be curious to know. You know, in our areas, there's a large, and we're not going to be alone in the city, I think, the rest of them are. Are dealing with that issue, if, if not, on your first, first part of the agenda.
Um, if I can, I, I mean, I would echo what a lot of you said here about housing, and I think, you know, even if you could. Contact your area or anybody, you know, how, how can municipalities or townships, or, or a. Housing, you know, because there's a lot of pressure everywhere you go, but everybody sees the need of it. Uh, and it's, you know, how can a township or municipality go about planning for that? For the TIF, or, uh, brown, you know, what that looks like, you know, how does a township plan for that, you know, you know? Something in that arena, I think, draw people, because I just think. That that's where the intention span is coming right now, and I think something in that line, you know, whatever, be like you, I feel like. I'd be able to work with, you know, if it were in that line somewhere, I guess.
Maybe we'll do, there's a handle discussion, with the local people, they're very, so that's.
Would you have any solutions to this space?
Well, it'd be interesting, you're very, it'd be interesting, you're very, from Michigan State, to bring us some valid examples. Where things were dealt out well.
Jackson Hole. Duncan, places, they have the issues, there are guys.
She's got guys from resources that.
Jackson Hole, it's going to the country.
Yeah, we're, it's not necessarily talking about the issue we have, but the solution.
Solution.
You're beautiful.
Pretty good example of accessible.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Jackson Hole, they're, they're huge issues.
Their, their, they just. That's a higher tax base. Anybody know anybody from Jackson Hole?
I'm sorry, we had, this is, this is, over years ago, pre-COVID, a random gentleman. In, in, in Duncan, was from Jackson Hole, talking about this, and he, he had a, this business. Around show, years, years, works, or, or what, what it looks like.
We'll, we'll, we'll talk something on that.
Yeah, housing.
So, I guess, uh. Let's see, I get, or, or try and give somebody, or, or any back there. All right. The fourth. General line committee.
If you recall.
I remember, I'm reading statistics.
Statistics, right? Basically, that's, what we need to do. Is, 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 maybe find some simple choices that are expressed.
It is something to sense is maybe find some simple choices better expressed in the.
And so we've we've agreed to tackle the first five chapters for our next meeting.
We're going to take and review it, put our comments together and get some some staff, staff to put it. Kind of put it together and. Format of the layout of the district plan and then we're going to take it over with. Kind of review everything, what comments you would do at best.
In the meantime, I have all staff have located. The. Where is the statistics reference there there since you think it's quite more current.
Yeah, yeah, it's good.
Next thing I'd like to say. And go.
Part, part, right, Rick?
That will be me.
All right.
So, um, we need to divide ourselves up into a a part of. Personal interest. Uh, group and we'll get to be needing it and my suggestion was to look at the C I P land because there's so much. Um, partly related projects on the C I P. I I need to look at specifically that, yeah. Um. So that's our next chore. Yeah, yeah, questions?
I'm also in that. Yes, and serve the whole set of per. So the discussion is around the. Needs a mass that is in a new mill built or. A lot of work on that is currently there for state.
So apparently I have kind of built a little bit of a structure, not in that. Or condition, the problem is the uh. That ask of making it to the A D A.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
You can't get to the.
So. Yeah, so it's like. I suppose that's right, I'm bothered in as it is, you can do nothing, but that doesn't.
Fix that.
Yeah.
Uh, my my question was related by a lot of carefully, uh, are they still playing that? There, they're still.
Um. They're they're flying for France or trail around the. Right now, um. So great application of that.
Yes, yes, y'all.
Wow, it's clearly.
Is that in my.
Yeah, yeah.
So sorry for getting. There was always ice cream, right, right? There's ice cream by miles, I believe, but.
No, there's that's part of the C I P, though. If there's any C I P. Then you have to figure out which one is.
They don't have water.
Yeah.
Anything, so that's all.
No communications? Back to public comment, public, so as well by the staff comments.
I know, definitely.
Okay. Michigan comments. Got one more on.
Go through her.
Nothing? Nothing on there?
It got me Earth Day, guys, nineteen seventy, we needed a birthday. We all love that, right? So client experts say actions urgently need that regulations are by our programs set in twenty twenty four. Customers are giving a lot more more additions and are are of course completely resist our targets set in twenty fifteen or or. So it's it's again crucial, we we pay attention. We need to put plastic motion and anybody that's close to inland seas and knows that they drop their. Very fine meshed, uh. My project.
Yeah, no.
That in the water, you pull out plastic, we find plastic particles in the fish. Um, there's also knowledge that it does cause the blood brain barrier in things. So we're not sure what the um. Impact will be having future relations. And we are all parents, yes, we are. Um, so keep it in mind. What we do and what we plan might be a good business. Should I notice things sustainable? Thanks for letting me talk.
Bye bye. No, no. No comment? I have nothing myself.